...to the flag of the United States of America and the Republic of America. One nation, unuttered, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Mrs. Golden?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Ward?
Here.
Okay, we'll ask for approval of agenda with one small change. I'm going to move the personnel actions till after the executive session. Can I get a motion to approve that agenda?
Go on.
A second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mrs. Golden?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Fagan?
Yes.
And Mr. Ellsberg?
Yes.
In our presentation...
Yes, I'd like to introduce Rebecca Princehorn from Brickler and Grady to give a presentation tonight to the board concerning the upcoming election.
Okay, would you prefer me to stand or do you want to go?
However you feel comfortable.
Well, I must tell you, I joined Brickler in 1981 and have worked with the district the entire time. It's been 43 years. Love time. And worked on the high school project and on a variety of things since then. I open with that because I think perhaps sometimes we forget history and you would have at your place this election history that I pulled off in preparation for tonight and for meeting with Stan and Barb. And the two things I would direct your attention to, if you look down levy elections, the last time this district had new money was 2013. It was the emergency levy that passed at the November 5th, 2013 election. If you turn the page, you'll see in terms of permanent improvement money, the half mill that was passed in 1999, that expires after 23 years. That was part of the OSBC high school project. And the board may remember, once that obligation ended, we prepared a resolution for the board to transfer money remaining in Fundo 34 to permanent improvement. So if you look at it this way, 1996, March 19th, 1996 was the last time this district had new money for permanent improvement. 1996 and 2013 are a while. So that is a little bit of setting the stage for where you are now. You are at the 20 mil floor. And Stan and Barb, both I believe, went to a meeting with County Auditor Dropsey. And being at the 20 mil floor means the effective rate of your existing levies will not be further reduced. It doesn't mean you're going to get any more money. It just, excuse the expression, stops the lead. They won't be further reduced. And just to give you again some perspective, in 1976, the year that House Bill 920 was passed, they collapsed all your levies. 26.4 voted mill at that time. Right now, they only collect at 8.4. Just again, to give you perspective. So where does that leave the board in terms of trying to make a reasoned decision about what to do? At the 20 mil floor, that basically means you have two options. A dollar-based levy, an emergency levy, which you have had before. If you look at that sort of history, that's what you did back in 2015 when you renewed its strength. Or an income tax. Neither of those count against the 20 mil floor. Or a combination of those two factors. So I want to briefly talk to you, if you look at this landscape chart thing, common options, traditional emergency. It can be for whether 10 years, will not take you off for four. Good thing. You just specify the dollar amount that you... If you look right below that on page one, income tax. It can be any number of years or continuing. Again, it doesn't count against the four. The real differentiator with an income tax is whether it's on all income or earned income only. Barb has done some homework on that. And as you can imagine, an all income tax or a traditional income tax, whatever percentage you would pick, it's going to produce more money because it's taxing everything. And that includes pensions, forever of retirement, and in some communities, that's a heavy lift, I'll be honest. An on-only income tax, taxes, wages and salaries, kids' pass-through income for sub-esp corporations. Basically, it's wagering us who are more likely to have kitchen schools, people who work. I'm not here to tell you what to do. I'm here to tell you, you're at the 20 mil floor, and you ought to be thinking about the best approach given that status. And we're using that as an income tax. Or if you turn to the third page, a combination. It's interesting, the combined income tax and property tax levy that's listed there at the bottom, they don't call it an emergency levy, but it is. It's a dollar-based levy with an income tax, one ballot question. And again, it does not count against the four, so it doesn't monkey with that. And the thing I found interesting when I was looking at the history, if you had ever tried an income tax, it would be at the bottom of page two. This district has never given that option to its voters. Clarefork, some other districts up this way have them. Again, it's not a right or wrong thing. It's what's the best fit for Mansfield City at this point in time, given that you're at the 20 mil floor. Regardless of which way you would go to get to the desired dollar threshold, whether it's emergency, whether it's income tax or a combination, your deadlines for the November 5th election are slightly different. The overall deadline is on set. So everything, everything would have to be done into the Board of Elections. When I do presentations for OSBA and the other professional groups, I say, you know, there are some things you do in person, like getting married. Taking your election proceedings to the Board of Elections is one of those things you can do in person, make sure it's there. But joking aside, for a straight emergency, there's no intermediate deadlines. You have the ballot deadline, number two, emergency levy. You really just look at the overall deadline. Two resolutions. I mean, you guys just renew what you know it is. And in between the two, you think certification to auditor Dropsey, he certifies back, you pass a second one, you get everything in. Income tax, number three on this chart, does have an intermediate deadline. You need to do either way, if you're doing a standalone income tax or a combination of the property, you need to have the first resolution into the tax commission for November 5th by July 26th. So you've got a little bit of time, not a lot of time, but you've got some time. If you turn the page, you'll see, actually, I smile every time I turn the page because May 6th is my birthday. That election, if you could wait that long, is a special election under Ohio law. And that's a little bit of a gotcha, and I want to make sure you know this. A number of years ago, some of you might remember, there used to be a February special election. Well, when they killed February, the legislature also made the May election in an odd-numbered year a special election. And so if Mansfield City Schools was on the ballot and you were the only one, there was no children's services, DD, library, you know, county-wide kind of question, you'd have to pay the cost of that election. And I don't know if you've had a chance to find out from the Board of Elections what it would cost.
No, I absolutely forgot. Actually, I'll find that out for the board.
What does that mean? Pay the cost, what does that mean? Sorry, I don't...
You got paid the poll workers, the security system, the whole cost.
Voting card. I had a district south of you, Delver County, not that huge a district. They were told $60,000.
Special election, excuse me, that you share the cost with whoever owned that ballot at that time, am I correct?
Yeah, and there may or may not be.
There may not be anybody, you burdened the whole cost.
Yeah, if you know the big walnut school district, they're the ones with that outlet more right there off of 71. $60,000. Was there anybody else on that ballot looking at that 20 mil? They decided, once they heard $60,000, they decided not to do it because they knew that would not resonate well. How much it would be for you all, I simply don't know. But with increases in terms about election security, the army of consultants, everybody had the cost going up. We even had township, poor precincts, everybody voted at the high school, they were told $40,000. So it's something to know. But then November 25 is a normal election, but you have board school board races and folks may not want to change deadlines.
I mean, because you have to do the resolution again?
If it would fail.
No, if we decided now and it failed now, we decided to do it again?
Well, you would maybe avoid many because of the cost. And then we'd have to do, if you do, our same thing. The number of votes required for an income tax, an emergency levy, you just take majority. If you do a combination, you need a two-thirds. Can't have part of a person, so that means four yells. I am happy to answer any questions you might have. I know you've been studying lots of intelligent folks, I don't want to insult your intelligence, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So just go, unclear. So if it's separate, it's majority. If we combine them, it's two-thirds?
Correct. And it's just a way to statute.
And the way it'll read on the ballot is one vote?
For both. To per crush.
So one can't have, one can't do.
Correct.
When you say 20 mil floor, you might hurt us. If we go either of these directions, what do you mean?
What I mean, I just had this similar conversation with Stan a few minutes ago, about, again, a bit of history. 1976, if you were around then, you know, there was very high inflation. I bought my first house in that era and I got a 14% adjustable mortgage and I thought I was rich. It was high inflation. 1976, George Winovich introduced his House Bill 920 in the Ohio House Record. What it does, and this is back to the beginning, that's what I was talking about, over time, it subtracts out inflationary growth from your tax base. That's why your 1976 current expense mileage was voted at 26.4, but only collects at 8.41. And that's not on the history, it's on a different sheet that I have. Again, another example, 1991, the district did a 5.7 mill voted on the date, that collects at 2.1. What happens is you get the benefit from new construction in the district, but any inflationary growth in your tax base, residential, commercial, doesn't matter, gets subtracted out by the Department of Taxation and you have an effective rate. Put another way, you're only ever going to get what you got in the first year. It doesn't grow unless you have new construction. And that is why Ohio school districts are constantly having to go back.
So either of our, if we were to do traditional or income tax, it would not affect that 20 mil floor?
Correct. Emergency.
Emergency, I'm sorry.
Or income tax because it's dollar-based. It's like a bond issue. You put a dollar amount there and then county auditor will figure the millage.
Okay, so inflationary, we could actually earn more later. We could not, we only get what we initially signed.
Well, with an emergency, it's dollar-based. Whatever dollar figure you present to Mister Dropsey, he's going to give you the millage. And it's like a bond issue. Over time, as the pie grows, that millage is going to go down because you get to capture the inflation growth, unlike a millage-based property tax, which is subject to a reduction factor. Income tax is more elastic. And you may remember Great Recession, Department of Taxation was having a conference call with all the school districts in the state that had income tax to kind of let them know where things were. Fast forward, I think, and this is, I guess, a little bit of Becky philosophy, it's a nice arrow to have in your quiver. If you feel as though too much property tax is not appropriate for this district and you want to have more of a balance, an income tax is a nice complement to all properties. And this district, I was so surprised, it has never seen one try. Why, I don't remember in the years that I've worked with you all, why that is, but it's never been tried.
Anybody have some questions? Well, I will say for all the reporters in the room, along with our cost-cutting measures, it is needed. And obviously, you've heard the history, but we do need new money. So that's all I will say, and I will accept the motion then to approve the combined levy.
Um...
Are you going to do that now?
Can I interject?
Sure.
For a question. We'll need to draft that...
Oh, so you're not asking for resolutions now?
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, I thought you wanted just information.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
If you do decide to do that, we'll prepare the paperwork like we always do. And then you will have to figure out the dollar amount of the emergency portion, I call it emergency, even though it's not called that, the dollar amount, it's going to be emergency. And then on the income tax side, you'll have to weigh traditional base versus earned income base. And then we'll have to identify, it's kind of backwards. You have to pass a resolution that requests the tax commissioner to tell you what the percentage is. You give them a dollar figure. So in a way, that's a good thing because you can work with administration, what's our target? And if we're going to have both, how much one versus the other? And that's maybe a discussion that you want to have at another point in time.
These resolutions need to be, if we were to do the income, they have to be in by 26th.
Just to the tax commissioner.
To the tax commissioner.
So we would send it to auditor Dropsey for the property. At the same time, you'll get, I don't do things piece by piece. You'll get the whole package, but you've got, it's only as good as the information you put in it. So you all need to decide if you're going to go that way, what the balance is. And then let us know, we'll get the paperwork for you with all forms that need to go to different places.
With the time and we need to get that information to you.
Sometimes people won't give me a couple hours.
Oh.
My husband would be better than that.
Yeah, me too.
Have them.
Okay.
If the board decides exactly what they want, then we would contact Miss Princehorn and she would draw up the resolution in necessity and the tax commissioner...
The whole banana.
And we could approve both of those the first night. Then we'd certify that to the county auditor and send it to the tax commissioner, both pieces, and then come back and approve the resolution to proceed. And then after we do that, then I would personally go in person and marry the board of elections and file that because they do give you a date stamp and everything when you file that. And it's very important to have them draw that up because the ballot language has to be, and I'm not kidding, a capital T if it has a capital T in it. Am I correct? You have to have the ballot language exactly as they require you have it, or they'll pull it off of the ballot.
So who does the ballot language?
The attorney.
We'll prepare it. It'll go first to the Board of Elections before August 7th. And then it goes to the Secretary of State. And House Bill 140 has made life kind of interesting. That ballot language, at least when the property tax trial has changed some, and so that's why we want to be holding your, I'm not saying, but kind of holding your hands all the way along because I cannot tell you for November already how many county auditors gone and lost them. So we're not wrong. And I know it'll get rejected by the Secretary of State, so we want to eyeball everything every step of the way.
So if we do an income tax, is that still July 26th?
That is for the tax commissioner.
The tax commissioner. The Board of Elections still goes all day.
On your side. So you want to work, I don't know, you know, what your schedule is, but you've got, like I say, you've got some time to force this out and then let us know and we can have everything ready for you for regular meetings, especially how, you know, it doesn't matter whether you're regular or special meetings.
And Barb and Stan, you have been looking at other school districts around us that have some type of...
Yeah, Stan has a list of...
There's a number of various school districts around us in Richland County, as well as in the state. And of course, from rural school districts to urban school districts. And all of their percentages vary from a half percent to 1%, to one and a quarter, to one and a half. And there are some that have 2%. So it all varies based on your needs. So we don't know if it was traditional or earned, we just know that, you know, once again, there are over 200 of them that have, that are doing that, also.
Well, just to anecdotally, the higher percentages are Western Ohio because it's rural. And those voters favor income tax. But that's not to say some redesovers don't pay income tax. I mean, so you've got urbans that have income tax that are usually smaller, rural has higher percentage.
And so anybody that lives in Mansfield City that works, whether or not we decide about the pension or not, whether they are a property owner or not, they would be paying income tax.
Not exactly. This is, I'm glad you asked that. A school district income tax is where you live, where you live.
So within this...
Has nothing to do with where you work. Municipal income tax is where you work. So you would pay income tax if you resided in Mansfield.
Because you live in Mansfield, but you work in Shelby.
Where you work doesn't matter.
Well, no. We'll pay the 1% or whatever.
Well, I'm saying your employer, Shelby would have to take out that 7%.
Oh, from the administration standpoint, yeah.
But you live in Mansfield City school district, you would pay it, whether you rent, whether you own, whether you direct you. And then the pension part is just based on whether we decide or not.
Correct.
Someone's retirement or Army pension, whatever, that would be our inclusion.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for coming and giving us this information, and we look forward to working with you.
Great, thank you. And if there are any subsequent things that occur to you, just let Barb and Stan know. I'll get right back. Thank you.
Okay, is there any public participation?
None.
Board member comments? Anybody have any board member comments?
The Music Boosters is hosting a meet the director night tonight. So it's going to give an opportunity for 8th through 12th graders to meet the new band director. They are going to have information on the upcoming marching band season, the calendar. They'll have some food too, not that it really matters, but it is going to be at the...
What's the date?
20, 6 p.m.
Lot of notes. I have a comment too. My grandson, who is going to be a fourth grader at Springville STEM, where they will take part in the Tiger basketball camp that they're running at the high school right now. And that's our coaches. And they've probably got, it's K through 6, they've probably got 50 kids, but for two nights, they teach them the fundamentals, talk to them about, you know, how important it is to get your grades, things like that. So, you know, one of those feeder programs we talked about. And, you know, and it's going on tonight in five minutes. Okay, nothing under approval for board matters. Superintendent Ford?
Yes, President Ellsberg, members of the board, we have two events that are coming up, one this week and one next week. This coming Thursday at Mansfield Senior High Auditorium is the adult education graduation that will start at 6:30 p.m. Andrea Cardiak Fuso will be presenting during that program. And then next Saturday, June 15th, we will have a number of our students involved in Juneteenth, which will be downtown Mansfield. And once again, I've been told that our cheerleaders will be involved in that. And then hopefully, as we move on, our band will be a part of that program as well. So those are two big events. Things are winding down for the most part for, and a lot of things for... Things are winding down for the most part for, and a lot of things for extracurricular activities, except for conditioning programs that are going on right now in some camps, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll make a motion, we'll go to executive session to consider the employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee. We will be voting when we come back on our personnel matters. For a second?
Second, okay, bye, babe.
Mr. Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Fagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Golden?
Yes.
Mrs. Tyne?
Yes.